Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the combined work session, regular virtual meeting for March 9th, 2021. First item on the work session agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance by Drexel Hill Middle School, 7th grade student Alvia Berry and 8th grade student Jaden Wright.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, pure and true, and justice for all. Have a nice day.
This is a little bit of a different night for us. We are in mourning. We are all very sad. We lost one of our own. So we're going to start with a moment of silence for Leah Dawes. Thank you. So if I struggle tonight, you'll know why. You'll be understanding and you'll help me get through it. Your compassion will help me get through it. If I struggle through the remarks that I'm about to say, I'm going to toss it over to my friend and vice president, Ms. Gina Curry, who will help me get through this, okay? "I've been trying to wrap my brain around what to say that would truly do justice to explain the magnitude of the loss of my dear friend. Leah Dawes meant so much to me on so many levels. I'll do my best to explain right now. We met as volunteer parents in the Upper Darby School District many years ago, and together we learned that the best way, we learned how to better advocate for our children and ultimately, all of the children in our district. Mainly, we bonded over the love of family. After hearing me talk so lovingly about my wife," those were her words, she said she had to meet her despite the fact that we had only known each other for a short time. She did meet my wife and they formed a fast friendship and sisterhood that they both cherished. I am grateful for that, especially since now they get to reunite in heaven and pick up where they left off. Leah was my friend and sister first, and then I had the honor of her becoming my colleague on school board. I had the pleasure of swearing her in as she took the oath a little over a year ago. The great thing was that the outspoken, spirited, humorous sister friend that kept me entertained years ago retained all those qualities as she joined us on the board. Her honesty and candidness was refreshing, and she kept me accountable when I fell short of her expectations and gave me props when I did good." Again, those were her words. She also established an incredible bond with each of her fellow school board members, since she was a people person and it didn't take her long to get the lay of the land. She fit right in quickly. She formed a great bond with our superintendent, Dr. Dan McGary, so much so that he referenced her on many occasions when he spoke, saying, "I better hurry up and wrap it up before Leah got on my case." She garnered and earned respect from all those who had the pleasure to occupy her space, and I feel blessed that she considered me her friend and brother. As time moves forward, as time moves forward, I will reflect on the positive and contemplate how to continue public service and living life without my dear friend. I will remember her candid advice and honor her legacy to continue the work to provide the best equitable education for all of the kids in Upper Darby. I will also do what she begged me to do for years and finally watch a Handmaid's Tale, and I'm not even quite sure what that is. I will reflect and think about the love and support that she gave me during the tragic loss of the love of my life less than two years ago, and how she would call me and just stay on the phone with me for hours, even when I couldn't form words. She said, "I just want to hear you breathe. I'll hang up when you fall asleep." That is love and friendship, and God provided her for a reason and a season. I will honor her and provide my love and support to her beautiful daughter because I know that's what she would do for me. Rest in power, lovely Leah, and thank you for the love and lessons. You are forever in my heart. Thank you.
My name is Leah Dawes. I've lived in the district for nine years, from Philadelphia, and I'm a single mother of a high school senior. She's a senior here at Upper Darby High. For most of my life, I've had some level of involvement with children, sometimes maternal, sometimes as an educator, but ultimately as a leader. Advocacy, I think, is really understanding multiple sides and being able to advocate for all of those sides. By me getting rid of my biases, when I said and advocated for my child, I was able to advocate for other people's children, as well as the teachers, as well as the superintendents. So it really wasn't about me. It wasn't about what was affecting my child at the moment, but what was affecting the school, not seeing it as just as an opportunity, as a gain for Malia, but as a gain for the school.
The second item on the work session agenda is a presentation by Drexel Hill Middle School Principal, Dr. Matthew Alockway, on Drexel Hill Middle School Student Council.
Thank you very much, President Brown. Thank you to the school board, directors, for including us in tonight's presentation, and thank you also for that tribute to Mrs. Dawes, who was very special to us, both in my time at the high school and as a, just a friend. As you mentioned, my name is Matt Alockway, Principal of Drexel Hill Middle School. When preparing for this month and the board update, there were a number of items that I wanted to highlight in the community from Drexel Hill Middle School. This year, we've learned so much about instruction and student engagement as we were thrust into virtual live instruction, and a big part of me wanted to highlight some of the outstanding teaching practices that have been learned and put into place. However, I know that our children and our families have seen all of this firsthand as learners in our classrooms. Another topic I wanted to celebrate this month was our connectedness with families outside of school. Between visiting homes with hotspots and computers to just checking in, delivering rewards to individuals, we have this year seen more of the children inside of the community than we have on campus. And after running through the many programs that I wanted to celebrate and recognize at Drexel Hill, I settled on, decided on, giving all due credit to the one program that we've been able to sustain that has had the largest impact on all of our students this year, which is the Drexel Hill Middle School Student Council. And now Jason Taylor was kind enough to help us to focus on our student council in a presentation, so if Mr. Taylor wants to roll the tape, we'll take a look at them firsthand.
Student council is a way for the students to create community within the school and kind of lets them, you know, run the school, so to speak.
It's the one thing among our clubs and activities that every kid at every grade is able to do, which is really a great way to get involved from the beginning of middle school.
I thought it was just going to be more work, like just extra credit stuff, but it's really just a place where you can collab with other students to help tackle different issues.
You have a lot of 6th graders, I can tell you that. Yeah, Ms. Heinrichs, Ms. Cessna directing us. You have a lot of people like putting their voices heard through certain stuff.
It gives a lot more opportunities for the students to express themselves, express their ideas, and feel heard.
It helps the kids to develop pride in their school, pride in their environment, because they're participating in the things that they helped to plan.
I'm not just a student being told to do something here and just do work. I'm also like a part of, I'm a part of the school as a whole.
So it really connects the kids to the school and keeps them engaged while they're here.
At the beginning of the year, we were kind of like, do we even do a student council? How does, how does this look?
In a year where so many things have changed and so many things have had restrictions on whether they can run, whether they can't run, just like everybody else, the student council had to really reimagine themselves.
For the most part, it's actually worked really well, and the people in student council have come up with some really good ideas for things to do virtually.
They have all these great ideas and they want to just have all these outreach programs, help the community, and be at school and, you know, meet, have kids meet kids, and have kids meet their teachers, but then they're like, oh wait, we can't do that, it's not safe, or we can't do, you know, they kind of backpedal a little bit, but they've, they've gotten creative with the virtual stuff.
One of the most popular ones is like cahoots.
We have cahoots. We've had a couple cahoots so far. We've had a fall cahoot, a winter cahoot.
Cahoots kind of a, I mean, most teachers, I think, use it as a review, but it's basically like trivia or multiple choice or true-falls, but then you can see all the responses on the board. So you get the live feedback. I was shocked, we had a holiday cahoot. We had over 350 kids.
We've also had a movie night.
There were more than 100 people.
I don't know that they watched the movie that much. There was just really a lot of chatter among the kids, which is fine, because it's exactly what they wanted to do when they got there.
We just did a camp food drive.
The students staffed that, operated that, all volunteered, and had to drive through the families and the community.
We collected over 700 cans that could feed multiple families.
They've been able to keep things afloat, promote some school spirit, have some fun days where kids get to share pictures.
We've had like Hot Chocolate and Class Day, and like Wear a Funny Hat, or Wear Your Pyjamas to School Day, and one Friday of the month, everyone can wear royal colors or any spirit wear that they have from the school.
And then we have committees. I'm on a principal's advisory committee.
The principal's advisory group is a relatively new leg of the student council.
The students in principal advisory just bring up problems that we see that could be fixed, or ideas that we have that can make the school generally just like a better place.
And that's my opportunity to connect with them, pitch ideas to them in a small group, we tease things out, I hear from them, they really speak on behalf of the students.
And they report out to us and tell us all the updates and different things that they planned.
It helps them to develop as student leaders so that they have a voice in what we do here, they help to shape what we do here, and they know, you know, really a little bit, you know, almost as much as the faculty knows about what we're doing at the school and why we're doing it.
It's definitely helped me feel a lot more involved in school, and it's helped me to feel like I have a place in Drexel Hill Middle School.
I've become more confident in myself, like, I'm not afraid to stand up for what I believe in, I'm not like afraid to disagree or agree with people, like, I'm, I'm more comfortable using my voice.
But a lot of them just like being a part of the school community and like saying that they're giving back and helping out, and it's just, you can tell that they enjoy doing it and being there because they're the ones coming up with all of the ideas and actually implementing it.
We're making progress slowly, but in the end, we did something for the community.
Thank you very much. The leadership at student council, I have to give all due credit to our two faculty representatives, Jamie Cessna, who you saw in the video, and Andrea Heinrichs, who is another teacher in the 6th grade in our school. In a typical year, their work with the student council means managing upwards of 150 kids in the cafeteria or the library who are making posters, and then going about the building and hanging things up and decorating. But this year, it has meant coordinating a lot of online activities and virtual meetings and hosting some of these live events. So in a year where in-person activities suffered a lot of restrictions due to the pandemic, at Drexel Hill Middle School, the student council has continued to shape the positive school climate and the connectedness that our students feel here at the school. On the other side of the pandemic, I think you can expect to see the middle school student council reemerge with as many or more in-person meetings, events, and celebrations as in years past, while trying to take some of the lessons and some of the tools that they've developed over the course of this year with respect to collaboration and distance learning and distance communication. We're very fortunate to have this group working with us, to have the staff that's working with the children, and to have the group of kids really advance student life at the middle school. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody and to the community and to the board and our administration for supporting us and for inviting us here tonight to brag about our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Alockway. Thank you for all the great work you're doing at Drexel Hill Middle School. The final item on the work session agenda is a presentation by Walter M. Senkow Elementary School Principal, Ms. Kamisha Simpson, on Supporting Students' Realities Beyond the Walls of Senkow.
Good evening, Dr. McGary, Mr. President, school board members, and Upper Darby community. My name is Kamisha Simpson, and I have the honor of being the principal of Walter M. Senko Elementary School and serving an amazing school community. As my team and I prepared for this school year, we knew the practices and methods we utilized in the past to ensure student success would have to now be unconventional and require us as educators to think beyond our classroom and school walls. Our school's central focus is to understand and engage in our students' realities. As I reflected on the emergency school closure of spring 2020, it dawned on me that our students did not and are not falling behind, but they are surviving a pandemic. Our students are trying to accomplish academic tasks while following unprecedented health guidelines, and while trying to understand and make sense of social injustices unfolding before their eyes as they navigate through their communities and watch the media. At Senko, we truly believe our students can and will be future world leaders, and it is our job to provide our students with skills needed to be productive and prosperous citizens that contribute to their communities. I hope you enjoy our video presentation tonight, and thank you to Jason Taylor for creating this video.
Virtual learning has definitely opened a lot of doors that were closed before or hard to navigate. Instruction definitely had to change. The status quo wasn't working.
There's just been this instant connection, I think, between in the school and the home because they're right there and they don't have, it's not just this thing in our imagination anymore, we actually see exactly where they're living and where they're coming from.
You are being invited into their homes, and, you know, part of the time, we were inviting them into our homes.
A lot of them are very excited to share, like, this is my space, this is my family, this is my world right here.
The people who do turn their camera on, you can hear background noises when they talk, you can hear their family's conversations.
I've gotten to meet everyone's little brother and sister at least 50 times.
I think that they would be disturbed, but they're actually not disturbed at all. They like to, they like to see our family members and they like to just interact with each other, even though we are virtual.
I love that. I just, I love that I've gotten to connect with the families, not just my one student.
Family members have the opportunity to actually be a part of the lesson. When we first started this back in March, families were sitting side by side, learning new math, and really being immersed in their child's learning.
I think we've done a pretty good job of keeping them as connected as possible, not just with the technology, but continuing to try and offer similar activities that we would. We've still been trying to do assemblies.
Once, we had like a student of the month assembly, and it was like this karaoke thing. I didn't sing along to anything, I was just jamming on those.
There are these fun things that everyone can be involved in.
Trying to keep the, the families still involved and feeling like this is still their school, I think has, to quite a degree, still been successful through all this.
Being outside of the township, it's challenging to really be in the community. So we've had the opportunity to actually go into the communities, to go out and deliver instructional materials, deliver certificates and awards.
We had a pizza fundraiser, so delivering pizzas to families and things like that.
I feel they go above and beyond. I mean, to make the home visits so consistent throughout the school year and make sure that the students are getting what they need.
I'm just out doing some home visits today, which is what a lot of the social workers have been doing since the pandemic, delivering laptops and hotspots to make sure that our students can be online and learning every day. And also, when I can, I like to stop by and pick up the breakfast and lunch that is provided by the district and drop that off.
We delivered, gosh, I think we went to about 40 homes, and that was just, we had so much fun, and it was, we got to see real children, you know, it was like, oh, you know, look how tall you are now.
When they see principal or any other stuff, they're so happy, so excited.
Oh, they was definitely excited, definitely excited.
There's been times where families want to invite me in and offer me something to drink or something to eat, just because they're so happy to see me at their doorstep. They see that we're not only here for their child's academic success, but to ensure the whole family is doing well.
Those things, those, we're on a team for that student, I think that really is a big takeaway from being in the home and, you know, being able to work with families.
With the pandemic occurring last spring, there were a lot of social injustices that, you know, were at the forefront of everything going on in the country, and we not only as educators had to respond to the pandemic, but we had to respond to unjust moments that were unfolding, you know, before our eyes.
It's something that's a little scary at first, because we, we talk about different things that may in the past be considered as taboo, like talking about racial differences.
In preparing for the school year, we wanted to have a book study that really touched on topics that basically would be like uncharted territory in the world of education.
The book that we're reading in our equity study here is Why Are All the Black Kids Sitting Together in the Cafeteria?
In that particular book, the author really breaks down what the definition of racism is and the advantages that one group may have over another group.
And we've really dived into the history of racism in this country, and we've also taken a look at some of the policies through our criminal justice system. We decided to start with 13th, which is a documentary offered on Netflix, and it was really eye-opening for staff members to see how events have unfolded in American history that still to this day impact our students.
The movie that we just watched a week ago was called Just Mercy, and one of the things that really stuck with me was how the gentleman who's a lawyer was portrayed, like, you know, automatically he was seen as less than. It happened in a police stop, it happened when he went into the jail to see his client. You can read about something, but when you see it on film, it just conveys that more deeply.
Not only have we done staff movie studies, but we've done student movie studies throughout the school year. One of them was Coco, and that was like in the beginning of the year.
And the second one, which was the Native American Heritage Month, they teach us like how did they live and all about the Native American history, and why do they celebrate it? And the third one was The Proud Family. We were learning about black history.
This is standard operating procedure for, for Senkow, right? I mean, it's always been a multi-diverse community that is really well-integrated and children get along great, so they've always had good respect for each other's cultural differences.
Our students are seeing a change and an impact just on the way that we are approaching situations, the way that we are trying to support them through these challenging events that are occurring.
Everyone is going through really bad era, but during these meetings, our surprise principal visit and other stuff, these are really, you know, somewhere it's positive. It gives us a positive relief.
The teachers are doing a great job, keep up whatever they're doing. Hopefully, when we get back to normal, I can thank them in person, and that like, even though we're through computer screens, we're all connected somehow, one way or another.
Please stay safe, and please always wear your mask. Stay happy and stay healthy.
I think Leah understood that magic and the connection that you have with your staff and the students and the families. It was great to see, so thank you very much for a great presentation and continue, continue the great work you're doing there. During this unprecedented time, while social distancing requirements are in place, the Upper Darby School District needs to continue certain aspects of its business, which includes decisions concerning pandemic planning. For this reason, the Upper Darby School District will continue regularly scheduled school board meetings while pandemic-related restrictions imposed by Governor Wolf and any local authorities are still in place. It is a plan of the school board to hold these meetings with the minimum required departures from normal operating procedures. The Upper Darby School District School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures Document outlines expected departures from those normal operating procedures and the policy justifications for such departures. At the start of each board meeting, held while pandemic-related restrictions are in place, the board will review the departures from normal operating procedures as well as their justifications. While social distancing requirements are in place, the Upper Darby School District School Board finds it necessary to hold virtual school board meetings and school board committee meetings to complete required business. These virtual meetings will allow for public viewing and participation. Following practices already in place for regular meetings, all virtual school board meetings, in addition to allowing near-real-time public viewing and participation, will be recorded, and the recordings made available after the meeting. In order to hold virtual school board meetings, adjustments need to be made following existing board policy. These adjustments have been outlined in the Upper Darby School District School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures. Dr. McGary, can you tell the public how they can participate in tonight's meeting, sir? Thank you.
Yes, Board President Brown. The board has continued to engage in the public and encourage that engagement through our committee meetings and board meetings. Tonight, if you'd like to participate in our meeting, you must send us a communication, an email to boardmeetingcomments@upperdarbysd.org, or you can phone in a comment at 610-789-7200 extension 2000. If you send an email or you phone in a comment, please make sure you provide your name and your address. It's also important that you let us know which report you'd like to comment on, so the board can take your comment into consideration before taking any action on any board report. Board President Brown, I'll certainly remind everybody as we make our way through the agenda this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. The regular virtual meeting of the Upper Darby School District School Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session this evening from 5:30 PM until 7:05 PM for matters to be discussed within the limitations for close deliberations as prescribed by the Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's matters, there were personnel and litigation matters. Roll call, Board Secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Dr. Hague?
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Mr. Des Newiers?
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Mr. War Savage?
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Mr. Neal?
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Mr. Fields?
I am present and can hear the proceeding.
Mrs. Curry?
I am present.
Mrs. Mitchell?
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Mr. Brown?
I am present. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Policy 003 allows the board to suspend policies or parts of policies when appropriate. Therefore, due to the current ongoing crisis, I make the following motions to suspend language in two of the board's policies until the next readily scheduled meeting. Policy 006.1, which regulates attendance at meetings via electronic communications, I move to suspend the language requiring board members to be present. Specifically, the language would be, "A majority of board members shall be physically present at a board meeting when a board member attends through electronic communications." In Policy 006, which governs other requirements of board meetings, I move the suspension of language requiring that those members of the public wishing to participate be present. Specifically, the language in the section titled "Public Participation" would remove the words that read "Present at a Board Meeting." Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, please state your name, say "I oppose" and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please say "I abstain" and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The minutes of the combined work session, regular meeting of February 9th, 2021, and the charter school meeting of February 24th and March 2nd, 2021, are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying I oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying I abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Mrs. Curry, the report to the secretary, please.
Thank you, President Brown. The report to the secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Thank you, Vice President Curry. Are there any comments from the board? Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying I oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying I abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The report to the treasurer, please, Mr. Neal.
Thank you, President Brown. The report to the treasurer is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
Did we get a second?
Uh, I don't think we did, Mr. Mr. Des Noiers. Thank you for seconding that.
This is Mr. Des Noiers.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying I oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying I abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. We will now have the report of the student representatives, Ume Sadiqway and Curtis Everett.
Good evening. First and foremost, we, the students in Upper Darby, are deeply saddened by the loss of Ms. Dawes. She was an amazing, amazing woman with a heart of gold. We are forever grateful for her advocacy, determination, and selfless service to all of this in Upper Darby School District. We know she will be smiling in heaven as we share the amazing things happening around our district. This month was yet again very full and exciting. The students, teachers, administration, and community have so many things to be proud of and celebrate. During the entire month of February, we celebrated Black History Month, which honors Black slash African American history, contributions, and impact on our daily lives. Schools across the district indulged in many activities and events to celebrate Black History Month. Bywood celebrated with the viewing of the Proud Family series and singing songs. SenCo highlighted Black Inventors and Beverly Hills students took part in a Black Historical Figure Project. Upper Darby High School had weekly Black History Month lessons that engaged all students and boosted schoolwide participation. To top it off, we had a district-wide Black History Month virtual assembly on February 24th.
Creativity kept flowing across the district with many fun events. VHS hosted a school spelling bee where sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students competed against each other and exhibited great talent and sportmanship. Drexel Hill and Beverly Hill showed their competitive sides during their virtual basketball tournament, the Royal Rumble. Students at Westbrook Park took part in Kindness Week dedicated to students doing as many random acts of kindness as possible at home and in their community. This month brought an end to the winter athletic season and began the spring seasons. Although this year is different and includes additional safety restrictions, students can still enjoy playing as a team. To celebrate all of our district pride and our wonderful community, we had a Royal Spirit Day as a day for students, teachers, administrators, and parents to show their Upper Darby pride by wearing any UD gear and accessories. Upper Darby continues to make our community a better place for everyone. Upper Darby Rising hosted the last three community forums on January 20th, January 22nd, and March 1st. These events were open to the entire community, and the purpose of these forums was to discuss areas of our district that needs improvement and possible solution to those problems. Upper Darby Rising has been a fantastic experience for our Upper Darby community to ensure everyone's equity. We as a community are taking a step in the right direction.
Speaking of right direction, our Upper Darby seniors plan for an in-person graduation ceremony in the high school football stadium. Seniors will have another opportunity to be together and celebrate their educational journey with excitement. We must follow restrictions and procedures, but this is a massive win in such a tough, long year, and our seniors deserve it. On behalf of the senior class of 2021, we would like to thank Dr. McGary, the school board, Mrs. Simone, Mrs. Cytek, Ms. McCandless, the graduation committee, all of our staff, and all the parents for making this event possible and allowing us to have a live in-person graduation. We know it was a very long process and many hard decisions had to be made. We appreciate all the time, energy, and effort that went into this event and continued support for the seniors. Once again, thank you. In addition to graduation, students will begin to return to their respective buildings on March 22nd. This next phase in the reopening plan will give students the option to return to the building or stay virtual. We are confident this transition will go smoothly and safely. The district is working extremely hard to get students back into the building as soon as, as soon as and as safe as possible. All students must be responsible and mindful of their actions as we return to in-person learning. We want each student to feel safe and comfortable while in the buildings.
The district celebrated Read Across America Week during the week of March 2nd. This month marked the importance and the joy of reading. Many students engaged in activities and crafts. Administrators, teachers, and other community members also took the time to spread the joy of reading by reading to students of different grades during the day. To encourage reading, our libraries in Beverly Hill Middle School, Drexel Hill Middle School, and Upper Darby High School received hundreds of ebook and audiobook on the MacKavina, Mac and Via platform. These ebooks will be added to the platform later this month and give access to a remote library to the students. This month was full of excitement and celebration. We look forward to continuing this upward trend over the remainder of the school year. Thank you to the Upper Darby School Board and Administrator for allowing us to provide the monthly reports.
Thank you very much, Ume and Curtis, for another great report, and we really appreciate your patience while we work through some technical issues. Thank you again. The budgeted personnel and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. We will now have the report of the superintendent, Dr. Dan McGary.
Thank you, Board President Brown. I wish I could keep this report short. There's a lot of important information, but good evening, Board President Brown, members of the board, administration, teachers, staff, students, parents, and members of the Upper Darby community. Thank you to Drexel Hill Middle School for leading us in the pledge this evening. And it goes without saying, but we're certainly blessed to have the principals we do in the Upper Darby School District. Tonight, we were fortunate enough to share in the outstanding leadership of Dr. Matt Alloway and Ms. Kamisha Simpson. One of our district goals is focused on student empowerment. It is really exciting to see the hard work that goes into making that goal a reality. This evening, I'll be writing an update on our next steps regarding our reopening of schools plan, our progress on rapid antigen testing of students and staff, and an update on COVID-19 vaccination of our staff. Before I move forward with my report for this evening, I would like to recognize the outstanding academic excellence of our students. Janet McGargle, a science teacher at Upper Darby High School, for her participation in the Penn State at a national conference. So we're excited that Janet has not only worked with our students, but she herself participates in these events, and she was invited to discuss her summer research experience. I would also like to recognize Jude Matthews. Jude is a graduate of the Upper Darby School District, and Jude has been working as an intern here in the district. He works closely with our controller, Marvin Lee. I've heard great things about him, and I've been told he's an integral part of the operations team. So Jude, if you're listening tonight, that is code if someone says that you're an integral part of the team, of the operations team. That's code for we really want to keep him with us. So Jude, thank you for your hard work on the following initiatives. Jude helped us build a transportation work order system from scratch in Google Suite, helped design the maintenance work order management system in Facilitron, performed market research for various vendors that were industries, and updated the transportation website with transportation team's input. A little background on Jude. As I said, he's a class of 2019 Upper Darby High School graduate and is a finance and management informations major at Drexel University. I think Board President Brown may have some connections there at Drexel.
Definitely.
He's due to graduate with a class of 2024. Jude was a mentee for the Upper Darby School District CFO Craig Rogers during his senior year at Upper Darby High School. So in Upper Darby School District, we do a student administration day, and Jude was a shadow for Craig Rogers. He happened to reach out to Craig for his internship and started in September 2020 and will work with us until the end of March. The best trait he brought to the district was his personality. He is witty, smart, and respectful to everyone. He has been a real asset, and we are really lucky to have him as an intern. So again, Jude, if you're lucky, this is all code for I think Craig Rogers would like to find a way to, to hire you when you, when you graduate. Congratulations to you, Jude. It's, it's an honor that we have such great graduates here and want to come back and work with us. Scholastic arts and writing competition, Upper Darby High School has three award winners. Zainab Alab, Upper Darby High School, for achievement as an honorable mention in the regional scholastic arts and writing competition. Allison Malley, Upper Darby High School, for achievement as an honorable mention in the regional scholastic arts and writing competition. Nicole Moreno, Upper Darby High School, as the recipient of a golden key, an entrance into national competition for her self-portrait titled "Loss of Self." All of the students we honor tonight will receive a certificate from my office signed by the board president as well. In the area of athletics, Central League Championship Wrestling. Faharun Chowdhury at 106 pounds, Upper Darby High School, earned second place in the Central League Championship Competition. Sam Kimmel, 126 pounds, Upper Darby High School, for earning third place in the Central League Championship Competition. And Julian LaVenture, Upper Darby High School, for his achievement as a triple A league district and regional champion in the 285 pound weight class. Julian has continued to move on. We're extremely proud of Julian. We should give Julian a round of applause for his accomplishments. And the Delaware Valley Science Competition, we have one award winner here with us, our very own Uma Sadiqah, Upper Darby High School, for her achievement in the Delaware Valley Science Competition. So congratulations to you. You're not only a member of this illustrious board as a student rep, but you're an excellent academic student here in the school district as well. Pennsylvania DECA State Conference for Upper Darby High School students. Laura Ibrahim, Upper Darby High School Business Club, for earning third place in the job interview category at the Pennsylvania DECA State Conference. Ava Taran, Upper Darby High School Business Club, for earning fourth place in the sports and entertainment team decision-making category at the Pennsylvania DECA State Conference. Maria Himinev, Upper Darby High School Business Club, for earning fourth place in the sports and entertainment team decision-making category at the Pennsylvania DECA State Conference. And Iftkar Faran, Upper Darby High School Business Club, for receiving the best role play score in the personal financial literacy category at the Pennsylvania DECA State Conference. National Technical Honor Society, we have four students. Lakeia Jean Louise, Upper Darby High School, in recognition of induction into National Technical Honor Society in biomedical technology for the 2020-21 school year. Jessica Nguyen, Upper Darby High School, in recognition of induction into the National Technical Honor Society in biomedical technology for the 2021 school year. Yamina Salicia, Upper Darby High School, in recognition of induction to the National Technical Honor Society in biomedical technology for the 2020-21 school year. And Tasnim Siddiq, Upper Darby High School, in recognition of induction into the National Technical Honor Society in medical careers for the 2020-21 school year. And moving on to, from our honoring our outstanding academic work and athletic work of our students, each year we participate in what is known as the International Mother Day Language Poster Competition. And we would now like to recognize our students for their achievements in this partnership between the Upper Darby School District and Upper Darby Township. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Greg Manfrey, Director of Secondary Education, who will announce our winners, share pictures of all the winning posters, and introduce our special guest, Upper Darby Mayor Barbara Ann Kefner. Dr. Manfrey?
Thank you, Dr. McGary, Board President Brown, Vice President Curry, all the board directors, Upper Darby School District community. We've been celebrating International Mother Language Day in this manner since 2014. International Mother Language Day is a worldwide annual observance recognized yearly during the month of February. It is a day that was established to promote awareness of linguistic and cultural diversity and promote multilingualism. Every year, Upper Darby School District, in conjunction with Upper Darby Township, observes International Mother Language Day, as Dr. McGary said, by holding a poster contest celebrating our diversity. Our annual theme is "Out of Many Languages Comes One Community." In Upper Darby School District, there are over 80 different languages represented by our students. Our teachers take great pride in providing students of limited English proficiency the opportunity to learn English, all the while celebrating their own languages and cultures. Our professional staff, both teachers and administrators, learn from our students and families regarding their culture and way of life. Our annual theme could not be more appropriate for Upper Darby Township and Upper Darby School District truly exemplifies a community that is united out of many languages. We are so proud of all of our students, and especially those students who have celebrated their language and cultures by participating in this contest. I'd like to thank Frank Salerno, our Director of Elementary Education, our Director of Communication, Mrs. Buford, for her support, Mrs. Eileen Caruso for her assistance in promoting this annual event, and of course, our principals and teachers. Of course, I would also like to thank Mayor Kefner and the township for their support and for providing our students with the prizes. I am pleased to pronounce, and I'm sorry, I am pleased to announce on behalf of Mr. Salerno, the Director of Elementary Education, our first place winner from Primus Elementary School, Rashwita Bhava Resetti. Our second place winner at the elementary level from SenCo Elementary School, Sadiqah Tasnim. At the middle school level, our first place winner from Beverly Hills Middle School, Samaya Sarkar, and our second place winner from Drexel Hill Middle School, Angela Keely. At the high school, we have siblings. Our first place winner is Anisha Rakra, 12th grader, and our second place winner is Harinder Rakra, 10th grader. As I've been talking about International Mother Language Day, our posters, our winning posters have been scrolling on the screen. At this time, as I said before, and Dr. McGary alluded to, we partner with Upper Darby Township every year for International Mother Language Day, and I am pleased and grateful that the township provides our winners with their prizes, which is a two-year subscription to National Geographic for our first place winners and a one-year subscription to National Geographic for our second place winners. So I'm grateful for that. And with that also, on behalf of the township, I'm honored to introduce to the public and the board, Mayor Barbara Ann Kefner. Mayor Kefner?
I think the last time that I was at a school board meeting, and it was pre-pandemic, which were coming on to the one-year anniversary of that, was exactly for this, this event and for the, these awards. So I, I'd want to let everybody know that I'm really grateful to be mayor and to be part of this. The, the award winners, and I'm sure everybody else's posters are really beautiful, and it really typifies the best of our community. And also, I, you know, again, since I haven't really been in a school board meeting for almost a year, I just want to let everybody know that the township is very supportive of the very many projects that the school district is putting forth to build schools, to expand schools that already exist. And we understand as a township, that's, that's a very large part of the school district, but not the entire school district, that, that schools are the real anchors to our community. So I don't, I don't know if all the... So I don't know if all the students that submitted drawings have to submit some sort of licensing agreement, but I would love to be able to borrow their images and their drawings and paintings for use around the Township. Anyway, on a more official level, I will say, thank you to Dr. McGary, Dr. Manfree, Mr. Salerno, the school board directors, the building principals. Thank you for partnering with Upper Darby Township in this contest that has been going on, as Dr. Manfree had said, since 2014. We know and we should cherish that Upper Darby is home to more than 100 different ethnic cultures and has a wide range of diverse residents. And with them, they bring their cultural influences, foods, and languages that make Upper Darby the world in one place. I am pleased that we are able to work with the school district each year to celebrate International Mother Language Day. And the goal of International Mother Language Day is to promote linguistic and cultural diversity. And the student posters do a great job reflecting the goals. And I'd like to thank all the students who submitted a poster. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mayor, for Mr. Salerno and our principals for their work. And special thanks to Mayor Keffler for your partnership on this important project. In the school district, it's a tradition we hope to continue moving forward. I'd like to just move forward quickly with an update on reopening of our schools. I know there's a lot of conversation regarding our reopening of schools plan. And the district has continued to provide updates on our process and planning to safely return students to our schools. We started our process following winter break by asking our students and staff to self-quarantine prior to our kindergarten through 3rd grade. And K-12 students in our low-incidence programs returned to in-person instruction on January 19, 2021. We have expanded our grades to include grades 4 and 5 on March 1st. We will now expand our return of students in grades 6 through 12 on March 22. That was not in our original plan, but given the recent guidance change and the trending toward lower positivity rates, we believe we can move toward bringing back 6th through 12th grade students on March 22. We are going to need some of your help as I go through this presentation tonight. We will continue to require masking of our students and staff, emphasize social distancing of 6 feet with the possibility of moving to between 3 feet and 6 feet. Proper hygiene, including hand washing, symptoms screening prior to coming to school or work, and stay home if you are sick. We've added to our list of strategies by implementing rapid antigen assurance testing of some of our students and staff, starting on January 26. I just want to briefly take a moment, there are some images on the screen, to again remind everybody that in order for us to return our students and remain open, it's very important that we are symptom screening at home. Check your temperature. If you don't feel well, please stay home. You can log in virtually, regardless of the cohort of the instructional model you decide. Please make sure that you're washing your hands or sanitizing your hands as frequently as possible. If we add to that social distancing of between 3 and 6 feet, we continue to wear our masks, and we continue to implement our antigen testing program, we feel confident that we can continue to move forward with bringing our students back into school. Some of the conversations that we're having with parents and students as we meet with them, we have conversation with parents who call. We meet with students when they want to reach out to us to talk about our plans. We hear a lot of conversation about moving from 6 feet to 3 feet and wanting students to return to school more frequently. In order for students to return for more in-person instruction at between 3 feet and 6 feet in our classrooms, while maintaining 6 feet in the cafeteria, here are some of the statistics and numbers we have to keep in mind. In order for us to get 6 feet in our cafeteria, 60% to 70% of our students in kindergarten through 8th grade and 50% of the students at Upper Darby High School would need to commit to virtual learning as of March 26, 2021. These school capacity percentages are determined by our ability to meet 6 feet of social distance requirements in our cafeterias. The district will consider students who attend school for in-person instruction with their cohort by March 26 as opting in for in-person instruction. The district will consider students who do not report for in-person instruction with their cohort by March 26 for in-person instruction as committing to virtual instruction for the remainder of the year. So below and on the screen, there's a table. And I want to take a moment to explain to the viewers and to the public. From this moment until March 22, we're asking you to have conversations with your child or your children and your family and think about whether you're willing to return for in-person instruction in your cohort on March 22, 6th through 12th grade. On March 22, students will be returning at 6 feet. From March 22 until March 26, as students begin to return from 6th through 12th grade in their cohorts, we will collect that data, meaning the number of students who have returned. March 26 will be the last day that we will use to calculate the number of students that are returning for in-person instruction so that we can consider a move to 3 feet, which potentially brings students in for more in-person for longer school days. Parents who do not opt in as of March 22 through March 26 are essentially opting to remain in virtual learning. We are going to ask those parents and those families to remain virtual until June 2021. I'm briefly going to go through a timeline and just talk about where we are at this moment. Tonight, the Board will be considering, under old business, updated phase reopening health plan. Here are some key aspects that got us to this moment. Recently, the Chester County Health Department updated their guidance and their guidelines. In particular, they added aspects called the community transmission level, very high, high, moderate, and low. In the updated guidance, it's providing school districts, superintendents, and school boards some flexibility to bring students in at less than 6 feet. We're only able to do that if we are out of the very high range, meaning the seven-day incident rate of the number of cases per 100,000 is less than 100 per 100,000, and the seven-day positivity rate is less than 10%. Right now, we are below the seven-day positivity rate, and we continue to hover at or around, sometimes below, sometimes above, the seven-day incident rate of 100 per 100,000. It's also important in this guidance to point out that transient interactions of less than 3 feet, such as passing in the hallway or handing papers to teachers, are unavoidable. The other guidance that we're updating this evening is quarantining of staff. Prior to this updated guidance, teachers and students should really quarantine for up to 14 days. Asymptomatic teachers, teachers who are considered a close contact but are not showing any symptoms, will be able to return to work after day 7 as long as they do not show any symptoms of being symptomatic. We will ask them to participate in a rapid antigen test or PCR test to ensure that they do not have COVID-19. We're doing this so that we can get teachers back in our classrooms as safely and as quickly as possible. We will not be doing this for all of our students. Students participating in music, band, orchestra, or athletics will have an opportunity to test out of after day 7 as long as they're asymptomatic so they don't miss out on those extracurricular activities. Other students, we will be asking to stay home for their 14-day quarantine period. Moving along in our timeline. I mentioned March 22. On March 22, students in grades 6th through 12th grade, and I want to clarify this because I know in one of our earlier communications, we were only bringing in 6th and 12th grade. It's now 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade that will be returning on March 22 in their cohorts at 6 feet. This will require us to shift school schedules because we are bringing students in for in-person instruction. Masking will be required. Symptom screening at home will be required. So again, please stay home if you're sick. We ask for proper hygiene at home at school. And participation in rapid assurance testing for some programs, special education, sports, music, and theater, will be required. Testing of staff and some students will also continue. March 26 is an important part of our timeline. On March 26, students in kindergarten through 12th grade, those students and families who are returning for in-person instruction are essentially letting us know that they would like to participate in our move to either below 6 feet or continue at 6 feet. And the students who are not returning for in-person instruction as of March 22 through March 26 will be asked to remain virtual for the remainder of the school year. You will still have the same academic opportunities you did prior to this move on March 26. We'll continue to use school logis communication to students in grades 6 through 12. Communication regarding the plan to move between 3 to 6 feet will be announced. Symptom screening, parent-family commitment will be expected. This will also require us to reconfigure breakfast program and lunch, possibly. Reconfigure transportation. Begin to reconfigure and review schedules to move for more in-person instruction. And again, continue testing staff and students. If we're to move from 6 feet of social distance between students to between 3 feet and 6 feet, the district again is asking students and families in the virtual instructional model to continue in this instructional format for the remainder of the year by March 22. Any decision to move back to in-person instruction beyond March 26 for students and families who have remained virtual will be addressed by each building-level principal and must keep students at least 3 feet apart in classrooms and 6 feet apart in the cafeteria. So really, the important part of all this is we think we can get more students in at 3 feet in our classrooms. The problem is in the guidance. We still must maintain 6 feet of social distancing in the cafeteria, and we have limited cafeteria space to make that work. Tentative dates and tentative plans. On April 5, after a review of March 26 data, we would check on our capacity and our percentages in kindergarten through 5th grade and potentially begin to move for more days of in-person instruction for those students who have opted in for in-person instruction. Again, in order for us to increase the number of days of in-person instruction, we need between 60% to 70% of our elementary school students to remain virtual. If not, we can only bring students in at 6 feet in cohorts. Tentative plan for April 19, similar to the plan for the elementary school model on April 5, would be that we would look to bring 6th through 12th grade students at less than 6 feet in our classrooms while maintaining 6 feet in our cafeterias in the same fashion we do with our elementary school students. We will look to the data we gather after March 26, relook at our schedules, recalculate the number of students that are coming in for in-person instruction, look to see how many students we can fit in the cafeteria at 6 feet, look to see how many students we can fit in the classrooms at 3 feet, and potentially collapse cohorts to possibly move to more full days of in-person instruction for the students who would like to attend more in-person instruction. An important caveat to all this information. We are only able to move below 6 feet if more students remain virtual at this time because the key is 6 feet of guidance in the cafeteria, 6 feet of social distancing as the guidance states in the cafeteria. As that restriction is lessened, as we can bring students in maybe at 3 feet in the cafeteria, more options become available to us. Just provided update on rapid antigen testing. We continue to expand our assurance testing to all interested staff, high-contact athletics, and performing arts, starting this week. The nurses continue to do an excellent job with implementation and supporting the initiative. We will be updating our health plan this evening to include rapid antigen as an added mitigation strategy to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Further recommended changes to our health plan will adjust the quarantine timeframe to align with the CDC and the Chester County Health Department guidelines. The updated guidelines provide for an alternate quarantine period, as I'd mentioned. We can get teachers back to work if they're asymptomatic on day 8. Vaccination update. We will be participating in Pennsylvania Department of Education's PDE's Plan to Vaccinate All Interested District Staff. All teachers and staff throughout Delaware County will be participating in this vaccination clinic at the Delaware County Intermediate Unit. Approximately 5,200 doses of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccination will be administered to staff, all staff throughout Delaware County from March 11 through March 19. During the first phase of this vaccination plan, 633 Upper Darby School District employees will receive the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccination. That's a large number of our elementary school teachers, bus drivers, and related staff. I want to thank the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Dr. Maria Edelberg, Dr. Council, Craig Rogers, Ed Marshallak, for helping execute this plan with our staff. We anticipate even more of our staff receiving a vaccine in the very near future. Normally, I end my board reports by telling Board President Brown this ends my report for this evening. But in honor and out of respect for Ms. Leah Dolls, who by now would be typing in the chat, please tell him to stop. I will end the report this evening by saying, "End of message."
Thank you, Dr. McGary, for that comprehensive report. I think Leah would be happy with the way you ended that. Thank you for all the information on the reopening plan. I think the public is well-informed, and we appreciate all the hard work that goes into how you're doing that to keep us safe and to get kids back in classrooms where we know they get the best education. Thank you, Dr. Manfree and Mr. Salerno, for administering the International Mother Language Day poster contest and the partnership with Mayor Keffler on that. Thank you very much for that. We will now have an update on the February 23, 2021 Education and Pupil Services Committee meeting. Mrs. Mitchell will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including the public comments, can be found on Board Docs. Mrs. Mitchell, please.
Thank you, President Brown. The Education and Pupil Services Committee met on February 23. We began at 6:00 PM. We had five agenda items, and I'm just going to briefly summarize them. And like President Brown said, you can find a detailed summary and the public comments listed under School Board on our website. So the first agenda item was the adoption of instructional resources. It's for board action tonight. The Curriculum and Instruction Department presented the addition of online resources for the 2021-2022 school year. All the appropriate ARs have been submitted. And the two items are Albert IO. It's a standard-aligned and personalized online instruction for high school students in advanced placement courses. And the second item is Naviance K-12 College and Career Readiness Solution that aligns student interests and strengths. And the adoption will allow students in grades 3 through 5 to explore interests and collect artifacts. The second agenda item is the adoption of textbooks for secondary English language learners. And there's board action on this tonight. This is a new textbook series for middle school and high school English learner classes. The new programs are published by Cengage Learning and National Geographic, and they're aligned with the World Class Instruction Design and Assessment NEDA. So we're excited about that. And you'll see that in the reports tonight. Again, all the ARs were filled out and are appropriate. Number 3 is an informational item. It was an update on the Upper Darby High School Scheduling Project. And there is a detailed presentation. If you go into Board Docs from the last meeting, you can review that. Mr. Tim Lambert and Mr. James Finch provided an update to the Board and the public about the high school scheduling project, which started in December of 2020. The project began with a mission to look at alternative scheduling options The project began with a mission to look at alternative scheduling options and included specific goals that were presented at the December Board Committee Meeting. They included, but were not limited to, ensuring a high school schedule would meet graduation requirements, student needs, staffing demands, reduce the number of students on campus at one time, prepare students for college or to be career-ready, and to ensure equitable learning opportunities. This item is correlated with our comprehensive planning goal one, two, and four of our comprehensive plan. Again, the item was informational. There is no vote on anything in regards to the high school schedule tonight. Number four is COVID compensatory services, and this was also informational. Mr. Ed Marshallak provided an update and a plan to meet the Pennsylvania Department of Education's recommendation to implement COVID compensatory services for district special education students. This recommendation from PDE is a refer potential student regression due to the pandemic. The process of data collection and determination was explained along with the services provided to recoup lost services. This item is informational, and it correlates with goal four of the comprehensive plan. Number five is three policies that are for board action tonight, and I know that Mr. Des Noiers will go over this when we get to that, so I'm just going to say there's three items. Policy 103, discrimination, 200 enrollment of students, and 218.3, action and placement of students convicted or adjudicated of sexual assault. There were a number of public comments. Again, you can review those on the web. I'm not going to go into them tonight. Thank you for this opportunity to review the report from the Education and Pupil Services Committee, President Brown.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mitchell. We will now have an update on the February 23rd Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Mr. Fields will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including the public comments, can be found in board docs.
Thank you very much, Board President Brown. Tuesday, February 23rd, we had the, right after the Education and Pupil Services Committee meeting, we had the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. There were three agenda items. First item was initiation of trash removal services. This requires board action. We're picking up our trash. As the Upper Darby School District will assume trash and recycling pickup responsibilities from our schools in the near future, the district administration will compare, well, did compare and contrast the two main options, in-house and contracted services, to fulfill those duties. The district administration is going to make a recommendation based as to what option we should select, in-house or contracted services, after reviewing the estimated cost and operational aspects of both options. This item correlates to goal one of the Upper Darby School District's plan, and we have a number of administrators who are now experts in contracted and in-house trash services. So they are available for consulting fees. Number two, facilities update. This is informational. The administration provided an update on the following projects. The renovation and addition, Clifton Heights Middle School, 8201 Lansdowne Avenue renovation, the continued need for a new elementary school. There have been a couple of meetings with families around the Carden Field area. Carden Field was discussed as a potential site for the new elementary school. This item correlates to goal one of the Upper Darby School District Comprehensive Plan. There are also policies for finance operations as well, which Mr. Des Noiers will go over. These require board action. Policy 610, purchases subject to bid and quotation, 611, purchases budgeted, 626, fiscal compliance. There was public comment, and the presentations, the detailed presentations are all available on the Upper Darby website in the board docs area for the finance and for the committee meeting that was held on February 23rd. Over to you, Board President Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. The Instruction and Curriculum Report, Vice President Curry.
Thank you, President Brown. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second, this is Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. Are there any comments from the board? Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Mrs. Mitchell, the Personnel Report, please.
Thank you, President Brown. The Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public before I move for its adoption. I do just want to recognize, we have a lot of retirements tonight, and I would like to honor our retirees and wish them a healthy and enjoyable retirement. Thank you for your long-term service to the Upper Darby School District. You will be missed. I mean, there are some really impactful teachers on this list, and you know, if you do get a chance to send them a little note or something and wish them a happy retirement, that would be great. I move for its adoption as stated.
Before we get a second, Dr. McGary would like to say something. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Mitchell, I appreciate those comments. In particular, for me, in reading this report, it's a flash in memory lane. Number 11, Ms. Linda Larkin was my first grade teacher. So to Ms. Larkin, I know you get embarrassed when I say this, if you're watching publicly. Congratulations on your retirement.
Just in regards to, you know, the retirements and all that means positions are going to be opening up, and you know, I encourage any teachers out there, hiring teachers that are in school, to take a look at the positions on our hiring website. So I just want to mention that we already started posting for next school year, and so you want to get those applications in soon. We have 100% tuition reimbursement, great benefits, and a great community behind this school district, so I encourage all to apply.
Thank you, Mrs. Curry. I think you also have a comment.
Yes, thank you, President Brown. I just want to also reiterate the sentiments from Mrs. Mitchell about all the retirees. A specific retiree on the list is Mrs. Joanne Jeanbark, and I just would love to give her a big thanks for all of her dedicated years at the elementary school where my children went, and I just wish her a really good retirement. Thank you.
I'd like to echo that. She also taught my children, so Highland Park is near and dear to our hearts, so thank you. I'd like to second that. Any other comments from the board?
I have one more.
Sure.
Since we're recognizing individuals, number seven, Mrs. Johnson. Mrs. Johnson was with me and my son Ethan through some of the most difficult years that we had on his journey to being a reader, so I just want to acknowledge her and all of her hard work. She was relentless in the cause.
Thank you for that comment, Mrs. Mitchell. Are there any other comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
No, sir, there are no comments from the public.
Thank you, ma'am. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The policy report, Mr. Des Noiers, please.
The policy report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available for the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. I heard the second. Are there any comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. Are there any comments from the public?
Sorry, President Brown, I would like to make a comment.
Yes, please do, sir.
So I should remind the board that the policy report this evening, these policies are in a second reading, so a vote to approve the report will result in these changes being put into our policies, and I would like to just go through a quick summary of the changes. Policy 103, this policy was updated to include the requirement for a school entity to take action upon notification of a student being convicted or adjudicated of sexual assault against another student in the same school. This change was driven by change to the underlying school code. Policy 200, updates to policy 200 are to remove duplicate language. Policy 218.3, this is a new policy drafted to comply with provisions of Act 110 of 2020, so changes in law. And policies 610, 611, 626, these are minor updates to increase the dollar amounts that trigger requirements for bids and such. Thank you, Mr. Brown. This concludes my comment.
Thank you very much for giving the details for that, Mr. Des Noiers. I think you moved it for adoption. Did we have a second already? Okay, we had a second. Are there any other comments from the board on the policies? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The Supplies Report, Mr. War Savage.
Thank you, President Brown. The Supplies Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move with its adoption.
Second, this is Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. We're now going to do the Facilities Report, the Use of Facilities Report, and the Donation Report. Mr. Fields, please.
Thank you, Board President Brown. The Facilities Report, the Use of Facilities Report, and the Donation Report are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption, and I will have a comment.
Can we get a second?
David Neal.
Thank you. I heard a second. Now, Mr. Fields, you have a comment?
Yes, so spring is here. There are 20 different groups who have signed up to use our different facilities throughout the district, and I am excited that people are going to be playing lacrosse and baseball and practicing their instruments and softball, and there's a Jazz Jam camp and a Butterfly camp, and it's great, great stuff, and I ask everybody to follow safe practices, okay, during this time. So just a polite reminder that I am happy that everybody's able to do these things, but please stay with the wearing of the masks, the cleaning of the hands, and the appropriate social distancing. Also, in the Donation Report, I want to thank Operation Warm for their generous donation of almost 300 winter coats to the students of St. Cal Elementary. This was really great and really appreciated. Thank you very much for that, and that'll end my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Are there any other comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The Finance and Budget Report, please, Dr. Haig.
Thank you, President Brown. The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second, this is Mr. War Savage.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I think that was an aye. Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. I think that brings us to the Collateral Assignment Reports. Delaware County Community College, please, Vice President Curry.
Thank you, Board President Brown. There's nothing to report this month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit, please, Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board met for its regular board meeting last week. I really don't have a detailed report. It was basically normal business with the exception of appointing a new Finance Director, Mr. Norris. So I appreciate the opportunity to serve, and we do have a committee meeting tomorrow night. If anyone's interested, it'll be broadcast, 6:00 PM, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. And you can provide a link for that, for anyone that's interested?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Legislative Counsel, Mr. Neal.
Thank you, President Brown. So I included an update to the board and to the public regarding a few topics that occurred over the past month. There was two that I do want to speak about, but you can read more about the others in the report. The Education Secretary, Miguel Cardona, was basically approved by the Senate by two-thirds. He is a previous teacher, and I look forward to seeing what comes out of this new position. I know he supports teacher quality, improving teacher diversity, ensuring that teachers receive the support and respect that they deserve. So I'm looking forward to seeing what's coming out of that. And then there's also a substitute teacher bill, House Bill 412. Now, the PSBA supports this House bill. Now, as it's written, you know, I do also support it because it does give the districts some opportunity to cover classrooms with substitute teachers while, you know, someone could possibly be out. But they are now extending it to a certain amount of days, you know, to 20 days where that person does not need to be in that certification area to act as a substitute. So it's going to allow more teachers to substitute in areas that they're not certified in, which I believe would, could decrease student achievement. And it doesn't address the cause of teacher shortages, right? They're only putting a Band-Aid on the impact that we see. And so I truly believe that more action is required in this area. I believe investment in teacher preparation programs needs to be made, and so I think as a board, we should continue fighting in support of our teachers and encouraging our students to one day, you know, become a teacher and possibly return to the community that they grew up in and teach the next generation. So I encourage you to read the report, and if you have any questions, please send me an email. Thank you, President Brown.
Thank you very much, Mr. Neal. The Mendenhall Tyson Scholarship Committee, Dr. Haig.
Thank you, Board President Brown. I have no updates at this point.
Thank you very much. Home and School, Mr. War Savage.
Thank you, President Brown. I believe the district-wide home and school is going to be meeting actually tomorrow as well as April 14th, if I have the dates correct. I also am under the understanding that there's also going to be a high school home and school meeting tomorrow at 7:00 PM. Also, everyone should get ready for the Dan McGary Home and School Tour, if you will, for the first few weeks of April. That is coming up, and that'll be, and this leads me into my next message. I think that would be a great opportunity for anyone who isn't already a part of their home and schools to reach out to their building principals, teachers, or even Upper Darby School District on social media so we can hook you up and put you in contact because these meetings where Dr. McGary and members of his administration come in and sit in these meetings, it's a great opportunity to get updates of things that have been going on in the district and also pepper our superintendent with any and all questions and concerns that you have.
Thank you very much, Mr. War Savage. I really appreciate your home and school engagement. PSBA, we did have the weekly buzz today, and Vice President Curry and I attended, and the focus on that meeting was the reopening plans and mulling the virtues of six feet versus three feet and all those implications. So that was one of the things they talked about. There's also a president's meeting tomorrow where the focus will be on staff development. development. Vice President Curry, will you want to add anything based on your recollection of today's meeting?
Sure. Thank you, President Brown. The only thing that I want to remind everyone is that next, on the 22nd of March, is the PSBA Advocacy Day where many board members will be meeting virtually with state representatives and our senator for the area to, of course, continue fighting for fair funding for our district and all the things that we're constantly in need of. So we will be advocating on behalf of the Upper Darby School District. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for mentioning those important dates. Policy, Mr. Des Noiers.
There are no updates related to policies at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And Communications, Mrs. Mitchell or Dr. Haig?
This is Mrs. Mitchell. I just want to say we've been continuing with the monthly updates. Thank you to Aronda and her team for helping us come up with a really great format. It is, you know, a live, like, internet document as well as it goes out to the community. So if you could share it around, the more we can get the word out of all the great things that we're doing and our school district and administrators are doing, that would be great. I don't know if Dr. Haig has anything else to say.
You took the words right out of my mouth, so thank you, Ms. Mitchell. I didn't want further to add.
And look for that, you know, early next week. You'll have your march up. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mitchell. So now we are past our collateral reports, and now we have a resolution. This is old business. We'll start with this resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors approve the district phase school reopening health and safety plan as required by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. I move for its adoption.
Second, this is Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. Are there any comments from the board?
President Brown, I have a comment.
Yes, please.
Thank you, President Brown. You know, as many of you know, I'm very uncomfortable moving towards anything less than six feet. Currently, you know, seven-day averages are still very high in the grand scheme of things. It is still higher than all the months leading up to the end of October 2020. So prior to that, it's been lower than what it is now. So, you know, because of that language, it kind of frightened me. Understandably, we will be seeing more data and then make a decision later on regarding a transition, and logistically, it would be very difficult to move towards that. But that language concerns me with less than six feet. I just want to make sure that concern is known. That's all. Thank you, President Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Your comment is definitely noted. Are there any other comments from the board?
Yes, President Brown, Ms. Mitchell, and then Mr. Fields.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. I just want to thank our staff for all you're doing to get our children back into the buildings with the safety measures that have been put in place. One of the things that I remember vividly as we've been working through this pandemic and making these very difficult decisions is that Dr. Rubin from CHOP telling us that really what this is all about is us practicing the health and safety guidelines and feeling very comfortable with the mitigation efforts. And I just want to say, since that time, you know, now our staff is going to be vaccinated. We have the rapid antigen testing in place, you know, all those safety precautions that the district has put in place, and we're seeing very few cases, you know, with students back in the building. So I just want to thank our staff for the courage you have to get our children back in the classrooms as best we can. Obviously, with the six feet, I know Dr. McGary has been very clear that we are going to stay at six feet for, you know, for now and probably into the future. And I just want to thank everyone for what you're doing for our children and our community. This is so important that we get our kids back as best we can in front of their teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. Mr. Fields, I think you had also the comment.
Yeah, thank you, Board President Brown. I would like to start off by saying that the staff, the administration has done, continues to do, and will so in the future, do an incredible, inordinate amount of work to address the safety concerns and to really make sure this goes as well as possible. I am also more comfortable with six feet as well. I kind of second what Mr. Neal is saying, but I will be sending my son to school. And if people recall, the beginning of the year, I wasn't comfortable with that, and I wasn't comfortable voting to open the schools for hybrid, not being willing to send my own son to school. At this point, I feel better about it. I think the process that we're going to have in place is good. I do, I mean, I think I'll always have concerns. I'll have concerns when the school's fully open. I think any parent that has, you know, this district has made a lot of room. Anybody who has concerns or doesn't feel comfortable sending their child in, they can continue along virtually, and that's fine. And so if you do feel that way, then you should absolutely, you know, continue. If your child's virtual now, continue with the virtual plan. But I really do appreciate everybody's work here, and I will say what I said in the beginning of the year. It's COVID. It's COVID. It's COVID. It's COVID. We are all dealing with something that's unprecedented and honestly not well managed at any level, although I think this district probably is setting an example for other organizations across the country. So thanks again to everybody for their work, and that ends my comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fields. Are there any other comments from board members? Okay, hearing none. Are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying I oppose and state your name for the record.
I oppose. David Neal.
I oppose. Don Fields.
Thank you. Okay. Those abstaining, please signify by saying I abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors approve the district athletic health and safety plan spring addendum for return to athletics as required by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. I move for its adoption.
Second, Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Okay, seeing none and hearing none. Are there any comments from the public, Mrs. Buford?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying I oppose and state your name for the record.
I oppose. David Neal.
Okay. Those abstaining, please signify by saying I abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Is there any other old business from board members?
President Brown, this is Mr. War Savage. I do have a piece of old business.
Yes, please continue, sir.
All right. So the piece of old business that I have is rather, is a good piece of news. Last week, a lot of us in the district had the opportunity of reading to our young people for Read Across America. Last year was my first opportunity to do so as a board director, and I did it at Highland Park. This year, I increased that commitment to not one, not two, not three, but four schools. I was able to read virtually to our young friends at my alma mater, Aronamink Elementary. I was also treated to a reading with our young people at SenCal Elementary, and I read to the kindergarten center. And I ended Read Across America Week by reading in person at Highland Park Elementary to Mr. O'Kane's class. And the story that I shared with everyone was actually a Japanese fairy tale called Momotaro, the Peach Boy, and it centered around lessons about how different people are brought into the world and how to work together to overcome adversity and what it means to help around the house and do chores and things like that. It was a really nice time, and I was particularly moved by the in-person visit at Highland Park because this time last year, we were in the throes of basically managing the upcoming pandemic, and visiting at Highland Park was the last thing that I did in person as a board director last year. So to come back and see some of those students in person walk those halls and have that in-person conversation socially distanced, of course, with Mr. O'Kane and others that I saw, it was a really, it was a really relieving experience.
Thank you very much for sharing it, Mr. War Savage. Is there any other old business from board members? Okay, we'll move on. Is there any new business from board members? I think, Mr. Berman, is this where you are going to enlighten us?
Yes. Okay, so I do have obviously something to fill in here, and thank you, Board President Brown. The school code gives you very little time to mourn a lost colleague. In turn, you cannot give much time to applicants to fill her seat. The end of your 30 days is Monday, April 5th, and as I understand it, the board will start accepting applications immediately and will extend that through March 19th. Those applications would go to the board secretary, which is Craig Rogers. Interviews are scheduled to be held on March 23rd, which will also be advertised as a special board meeting. For those that are considering applying for the position, there are a few minor statutory qualifications. The person must be a resident of the district and must have been a resident of the district for a year prior to appointment. At the time of appointment, must also be an 18-year-old person and a U.S. citizen and registered to vote. There are a list of incompatible offices. They are generically elected positions at the local, school, and county level. If you are in one of those incompatible offices and are selected for this position, you cannot be seated until you give up that other position. The means of selection by the board, while it's not actually required by the school code, your board operating guidelines require advertisement, applications, and interviews. The advertisement will appear in, I believe, tomorrow's Daily Times. The applications, as I indicated, will be accepted until the 19th, and the interviews will be on the 23rd. A majority of all sitting board members must vote in favor of the successful candidate. So if you have, for instance, three candidates and nobody gets four votes, you're going to have to vote, sorry, five votes, you're going to have to vote again. If you actually need a list of the incompatible offices, I can give it, but I think that people have a general idea of what that would be. I can certainly answer any questions, but I think that, you know, the board's been through this before. You have a general idea of what you're doing already, and if you have any questions, you can certainly ask.
Thank you, Mr. Berman, and thank you for being here tonight in person to really give us the details for that, and you helped navigate us through this before. So thank you again for your help and guidance. Is there any other new business from board members?
Board President Brown, I do have a question.
Certainly.
About the advertisement of the appointment of the position, and maybe Craig Rogers could answer that or someone else. Other than the advertisement in the Daily Times, are we going to be marketing that on our website, like on the splash page or anything like that?
Yes. First thing tomorrow morning, the ad will run in the paper. It will also be put onto our homepage on the district website as all of our ads are posted. I'll just add that the ad does, will state that we're asking for applications by noon on the 19th Friday so that we have time to compile them and put them together before the close of business on Friday.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you for your question. Are there any other questions from Mr. Berman or Mr. Rogers regarding this process from board members? Okay, thank you again, gentlemen. We are now at the time for the public hearing. We will read both emailed and phone comments, which are subject to the three-minute time limit and must include the commenter's name and address. Mrs. Buford.
President Brown, there are no comments for this evening.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. Have a good night, and thank you for your patience, everyone. Take care.